Still be in the.
I knew you.
Oh, yeah.
Chuck was coming.
Uh, oh, thanks.
Yeah. Well, we need to do. All right. Yes. Uh, let everyone please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Oh, you didn't name it, sir.
My pledging agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible. We got Bob and.
Welcome.
Fritz, okay.
Hi.
Who's on?
Hey, Bob.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Happy holidays. Uh, this is the December thirteenth meeting of the County of Canada, they go planning board. And my agenda. Okay, uh. Sir, are you here for a particular application? I assume you are.
Yeah.
Wouldn't like to hear somebody for Chuck Potter and.
Okay.
Are you here for the diversity?
Yeah. Okay, would you like to know everyone who's here or can we forego that?
Can you read the names?
Yeah, save the introductions, okay. And since we have nobody virtually. Uh, let me, I'll get to you in just a second. Uh, sir, if we have a emergency and we have to leave the room, two accidents, two exits, sorry, two accidents. Two exits, the other side of us and please be aware where they are. Uh, but we are waiting for our fourth board member, Mark Tovar, to arrive and of course is joining us virtually. How you feeling, Bob? Okay. Leave your germs at home. And I will now open the floor for, uh, privilege of the floor. Anyone like to address the playing board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda for the season? Okay. Uh, I confirmed there were no legal notices required for this meeting and savings. We have no public hearings. Uh, we've only site plans to review. Now, with that being said, let's move on to site plans. First, I plan is from Mark's engineering, Carol Logan Rockcastle. Just on Beaven Street in Canada, they are presenting J and T properties, Canada, they will LLC, there Chuck Potter. Uh, also located in Canada, owner property of fifty-two ninety North Street. Uh, requesting a lot line adjustment and a single say site plan approval for construction of fourteen hundred square foot addition to an existing building on the site, stormwater mitigation for the increase in previous surface to be created by the addition. The addition will not exceed the thirty percent maximum building coverage required by the town, and this is a continuation of our review from back in November. So, sir, would you introduce yourself and give us your address?
There's no mic.
Oh, that's.
Even though the mic is right up there.
Okay, uh, it's John Jones of Mark's Engineering.
Welcome, John. All right, tell us a little bit about, uh, what you're proposing. I think the board is pretty familiar with, uh, what's what you're applying for.
Yes, it's pretty basic, uh, Mr. Chairman, basically. Explain, let's go around your little intro there. Um, so the building.
Uh, we don't have one, uh. You can go and point to it. I mean, just don't touch the screen, that's all.
So this building here is, uh, the building that's going to be, uh, uh, have the addition on it, fourteen nine square foot addition. Uh, addition, we're gonna have some stormwater stuff. Um, and then with that, we're also, uh, proposing lot line adjustment. Uh, this dash line here was the, the old, uh, boundary line. Here is. That's the two components of this, uh, projects. Any other questions?
Okay, uh, MRB, good review letter, but since it's sort of great. Uh, you see, give us a response.
Yeah, so we responded today to their letter. Uh, we don't have anything, uh, any issues with, uh, RV's letter and, uh, provide updated plans.
If approved, when the conditions will be compliant with their review and it sounds like you're all willing to do that.
Yes.
All right, well, then, uh, we did talk about the lot line adjustment. That'll be required to be completed and recorded prior to the signing of the plan. Were you have any questions, concerns?
Did not?
No.
None.
We got, we did not receive any comments from Chris Jensen, for your Fletcher, uh, no comments from the city fire department. He could state that no lighting is proposed as part of this, you know, legislation. And so the, uh, on the seeker, we're gonna require a ship of, chipper letter.
Now, this has been previously disturbed area. We've received no impact letters before as part of the other, the private.
All right. Anybody from the audience like to, uh, address the board regarding this application? If not, let's move on to the overations. Uh, this is an unlisted action. Applicant is filled out part one. MRB is filled out part two and three. So, uh, when we take each, uh, seeker and the site plants separately, because it is unlisted, so. Uh, can I have a motion on the seeker resolution, please?
I will make a motion to approve the seeker determination non-significance for twenty-two dash zero seven one.
Good.
I'll second.
Motion in second, any further discussion? If not, on favor?
Aye.
Okay, then moving to the site plan. Do you think we have any further conditions to add to it? Do you understand what you have?
The only one that I just pointed out, the lot line adjustment is to be signed and filed with the county before signatures are fixed at the same time. So that's, that's what.
Since we didn't get any comments from Chris, do we have to, do we need?
No, I think four was added originally because there was some question prior to the lot line adjustment. So I think four could be.
Or maybe. Or in five?
No, well, let's leave it. Any CEO comments are to be addressed. These comments later. On CEOs.
Soon as far, not the possible building market, so.
That's fine. Whatever the board.
Uh, I think our practice, if we don't get comments from, on the plan, we usually don't.
Is it?
And.
Five was being strict as well, the site development from in.
Three, two, one.
Three and four.
Five, we would need to keep.
I would say keep three because I haven't had a chance to.
No.
So just four.
Just four.
Okay. Any further changes? If not, uh, do we have a motion?
I will move to set the site plan with the.
Six.
Six conditions. More CPN twenty-two oh seven.
I'll second.
Okay, the discussion, not all there?
Aye.
Close? Okay, John. Let's come in.
Thank you for the.
Just give me a second, you sign that secrets.
Sure.
Will I move right into the first part?
Are you gonna move that, Chuck?
Uh, well, let me, if we take it in order here, let me just note.
All right.
That, uh, uh, CPN twenty-two oh seven seven. Mrs. McNabb and Mr. Witbeck have, uh, through their engineer request that a continuation of their site plan review, their property over on Black Rock Drive, Black Point Drive. They didn't, oh, they're working with, uh.
They're working with Tyler on septic issues.
They were back to the ECB.
Yeah, we got those comments.
Okay, and I think other than worrying about, uh, concerns about invasive species, plants, I don't think there's anything else ECB had. And steep slopes, I think it's.
We had asked them for a profile of the home. Home.
Size. Uh, steep slope.
Yeah, we haven't answered that.
The only thing that may happen is the site events themselves may need to be changed because they, one of the statements was they had redesigned or introduced a new wastewater, on-site wastewater treatment system. So if they're not able to reuse the existing one or expand it, then most likely the site plans would be altered to some degree to accommodate a new design. So I think that's something that they're working on as to what limitations they may have to accommodate.
Refresh my memory, what's the water issue?
The only, it was, uh, Mark had been out there looking and there was leak either internally that in the house. He saw it when he was walking in the property.
He said.
Water was coming out.
Okay, because.
So sorry.
Remember, okay.
Yeah, that's the water.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I had a question on that.
Uh, no questions.
The email, oh, I'm sorry.
I had a question. I saw Tyler's notes on the septic tank saving and it can only handle the two bedroom, but it never said how, how many bedrooms was gonna be in that house? That was my question, how many was gonna be? And if there was a studio apartment over that garage, I wasn't sure.
So the revised email that we received from, um, I think I have it in my findings.
Tyler.
I got it. And the latest email from Tyler identified that according to the architectural plans that were provided to him, which was what they had requested the first time to determine exactly, to your point, I thought it said four bedrooms, which then would make it not, the, the existing facility not sufficient to handle it and therefore leading to the redesign that he's requesting. So at this moment, I think there's four bedrooms being proposed per the architectural plans that were provided to Tyler for his review and ultimately redesign of that sector system on site is being requested.
Say four plus the grads or say four?
His email didn't say, and I didn't get the architectural plan, so I don't really know if there, that includes the other part of that question.
Okay, well, the applicants request to table did not include any data to win.
It did not.
So you wanna move it to just January tenth?
My, my thought was let's put it on that agenda since it's fairly late.
Good.
Then if we need to, you can.
Need more time? Okay, uh, so we don't have a resolution in front of us, but, uh.
You do, you have a.
You have a continuation.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
You are quick. Take back everything.
Not everything.
Okay.
Okay.
We have. We do have a resolution. For us. Uh, so let's put in, uh, January tenth of twenty twenty-three.
Oh, yeah, there you go, see?
See?
Well.
I had to find something.
Nice.
I can't get it right.
To continue based on the watershed inspector being, being made comfortable, steep subplan, which is still going, outstanding, rather, I think they took care of the ECB, so that's, we've gone over that issue. So I have a motion to continue this application to, uh, next year.
So moved.
Yeah, on favor? Oh, second?
Second.
Second.
Bob, Bob.
Okay, motion second. For the discussion, if not all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay. Now we're moving along.
That's the seeker for.
That seeker's for.
Yeah, I do, I know.
The JT. And now move them up on block four. All right, John, you back to talk to us, uh, about the verse? So, uh, there was a pool, a little plan. Last spring. There was a change of, uh, design firms. There's also, as a result, some changes in the plan itself. So you're here with a revised plan prepared by your firm, and I guess I would ask, what are the changes that were made between last spring and tonight? You just post this up, this would be very.
Yeah. Scroll down to the. The layout is, uh, pretty much, uh, magical. Uh, this driveway loop has been added just for, uh, people's circulation. That's the only change for layout, so, uh, engineering stuff, uh, is different, uh, with the nurse's stormwater. We're taking, uh, on up here. I think it would probably be something in the rear. But I do have a little spiel here, so. Yeah, so I'll do a quick background just to, I don't know, uh, just to refresh anybody's memory. So it was heard and approved on June twenty-ninth, uh, twenty twenty-two. And tonight we're just looking for amended site plan approval. Site's located in nineteen forty-seven, uh, state roof three, three, two. Uh, it's located in the community commercial district. Uh, so the development is, like I said, basically this, um, or is the same, uh, the, uh, five thousand square foot equipment repair. Uh, rental building and a four thousand square foot. But with storage building, uh, and the layout revisions I just spoke of, uh, just include the loop driveway. Um, and then the engineer revisions, um, include the stormwater stuff. Um, and, uh, subject, uh.
I think operationally, nothing's changing in terms of their operations on site or what they.
No, no operations are intended to be the same. We received, uh, RV's letter, uh, most recent letter, I think it was last Friday night. It's on there. Um, anyway, we don't have any issues addressing their concerns with that. And that pretty much wraps up my presentation, it's really, um.
Okay, well, yeah, I'll point back to the operations and maybe hopefully you can answer this. Uh, we just wanna make sure that the use is allowed in, in that extent.
No need to disagree.
Or.
We're figuring that out as we speak.
Oh, okay.
Is that just so?
Uh, Bob, I know you had some questions regarding the, uh, the use issue, uh, you wanna bring that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so my, my only issue was, I remember this very well. I went out there today to look at it. Use my voice. Um, we didn't really talk last in June, anything about rentals. It was mainly about a couple guys doing repairs and sales. And, uh, my concern is, uh, I do see there's a lot more rental on this, but their operational statement does not say anything about rental, just that it's a repair facility. So if it's gonna go forward as a repair, I mean, as a rental, I believe at least a statement, that statement should be revised. And we should continue to think about and talk about, uh, how those items were going to be, uh, not out front. Uh, we, uh, gave them one vehicle out front, uh, for the day, but they had to be put away at night, as you remember.
So.
Yeah, under the canopy.
Pardon?
So I can, I can address this issue and saw it right now. Uh, it is a complete error on our part. There is no rental, uh, component to it. We had put rental in the site plan, uh, at the beginning, uh, because when he came to us, they talked about doing rentals, so we wanted to make it clear that it was rental, uh, and then since then they have, uh, they're not gonna do any rental, uh, from this facility, just repair, and then the building is storage for vehicles that are going to be repaired or in repair.
Well, we were planning on talking about it for at least five to six more minutes.
Once repair and resale.
No, right, but repair, refurbishing.
And then resale, right?
Resale.
Yeah, so it's not a resale, so.
What's the state of operations?
Yes.
That would be a condition that that be revised on the plan, that that a state can be added to the plan, that no rentals.
And if needed, Chris, on their application, it stays, uh, rental also, if that needs to be revised.
The application, the initial, you know, cross out and initial, um.
But I guess I don't want to, uh, if, if they did want to do rental in the future, uh, would that.
Could stop in at the development office and look by, we're.
Actually.
Used to do that. Use the same site.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
It would be amended to, and I don't think that would be a heavy.
Right, and I'm sure that the applicant would want you to move forward. About the ones, I know that this is, they want to get moved. So we could do that down low as table.
Oh. So I think what happened then is currently, this isn't a special use permit.
It's not.
So. Depending on whether that writing's even allowed in there, I don't know, but.
Yeah, we'd have to look at the zoning, um, and see.
Because if renting is allowed, then, uh, there will, there will be a change necessarily needed other than updating the state of operations. Town filing purposes, is why I make it clear that the procedure that might be.
Yeah, but since we don't know.
So I have the notes for.
Let's have that be the condition and Chuck can waive that condition if it turns out it's a permitted use and, you know, yeah.
Or zoning officer can.
Yeah.
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 Chuck can waive that in consultation, the zoning officer.
Okay, uh, Bob, you also had a question on, uh, equipment out front. John, can you assure us that, I know there was some discussion back in June about, uh, the applicant was thinking about putting a piece of equipment down by that.
So.
Architectural.
Here, right?
Yeah, right there. And we said, uh, no.
Didn't do the water.
So I think the, the concession was they were going to put a piece of equipment underneath the overhang up there, the buildings that left. Uh, would say put out there in the day and bring in at night. So, uh, I assume nothing's changed in that regard?
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, um, that is still the plan.
Yeah, the, the previous condition was, uh, display shall only be allowed under the cover of the building roof and only during working hours. No uncovered display will be permitted. That was what was previously.
The conclusion we came to.
Do we have an all previous conditions?
Mm-hmm.
I have the exact, well, I just copied all the previous conditions, I think, because they hadn't addressed.
No, they hadn't, because we hadn't.
We get another guy further.
Yeah.
I think in June, the applicant, on and on, we asked about the silo. And they said they were gonna refurbish the silo and put landscaping around the silo and really make it an architectural feature to form with the agricultural essence of the area. Uh, is that still going to occur? It doesn't show on your plan.
Uh, yeah, it's, I don't know what his exact, uh, intentions are in regards to landscaping around the silo, but he.
Can we say it will be in conformance with what was originally approved possibly? I believe that is a condition.
Look, um, I, I think, I, they're not here tonight, so I don't really know what his exact plan.
Well, how's the board feel? I think there was something we discussed that, uh, a little bit like in trying to dress up in front, because really there's other than that, other architectural or landscape feature, you have a right side of the driveway. Uh, it's not too much happening as far as the furniture. There's, uh, that tree line either side of the driveway, is that existing or proposed?
That's off their property.
It's, uh, exists, existing, now will remain. Yeah, I realize you sort of get to the top of the hill and anything beyond that, you really can't see from three foot two. And I know, uh, I guess Nigga, uh, part of transportation was not crazy about having landscaping in the right of way.
Yeah.
So that sort of limited us to what we could do, although we did talk about silo, we did talk about the, uh, landscape. And so, so right there. What's, what's the board feel about, uh, landscaping in front? Anything, you feel it's needed? I mean, we will now have a basin. Forage, but then again, that'll be at the top of the hill.
Is there a separate warranty for that?
Uh, there is a warranty.
Can we see that?
Yeah, mostly shit all the way.
Chuck, I think it's gonna be like F L X Marine. They're up on that hill, can really see the building.
Yeah, yeah, yep, that's exactly.
We'll let's see where.
I, I keep.
Oh, I keep seeing.
There we go.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff there. And I think that was at the request of the ECB on the original plan that they wanted to see a bumper in the back, which provided, uh, you, uh, but it's kind of barren in the front. So at least, you know, dressing up the silo, putting some landscaping, planting shrubs, bushes around that, I think. That'll, uh, that'll help and, uh, you really don't call out or show anything is what's to be provided for in the. Did we, uh, think to the right of the driveway there?
The silo isn't on it.
No. If they like this one.
Yeah.
Um, how about around the basin itself? Everything, yeah, that's, I think it's probably up high enough that anything around it, you won't see from the room, it's not offered. And that's what lend to the, the bottom left corner?
Yeah.
And that was, it was stated before, that will be untouched. I think the drainage works better this way than the other way. That's. Drain it into that swell around the site to the, to the east. Okay, well, let's just put something in there regarding the landscaping. Why don't we put as condition that the, uh, silo will be treated the same as it was for the original location?
I would have to go back and look at the minutes because there wasn't anything as a condition regarding the silo. But the applicant shall add to the landscaping plan, the silo and. Additional landscaping.
I think the McCormy plan had, did show this landscape around the side.
Yeah, I thought the.
Yeah.
And I think it also did show extra around the water feature.
Yeah, I'm looking at the old plan now. It shows, um, bushes around the front of the buildings, both buildings and the silo.
Maybe it would be easier just to say and match their originally approved plan.
Yes.
Landscaping may be updated to, uh, I, to reflect the originally approved plan, certainly to the silo in the front of the building.
For the.
With native species, because.
Yeah, I have that already.
Native species.
That one's, that was a good change there.
But there's, uh, plants along the top, they check for species type. The easy one, yes.
Not this, yeah, so we will have to make sure that they're native.
You can just say, yeah, the whole, the entire property should be, uh, all landscaping should be.
Yeah, you have a condition, I made all in landscape, I do, to include only the species.
Okay. Uh, you, you added the gate. That was about the original plan. And I, I think we. And I, I think we, 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 we didn't care one way or the other, we were concerned about people driving up there. And at the, at the time, the applicant didn't feel too concerned about it, but now I guess he's concerned, so. Um, yeah, I think it was.
I don't know.
I don't see it.
It wasn't, yes.
On the horny plant. But same number parking places, such like the same location. Uh, it's you've, uh, you wind out the throat in the entrance off of through thirty-two, how are you making out with, uh, my dad as far as your permit? Have you made an application yet or done anything?
Yes, we submitted, um, we haven't heard anything back from very.
Okay, that'll be a condition of your approval, as it was the last time. Uh, septic approval, who, who gives the approval on this? Chris, D O H?
Chris, not D O H.
Okay, so town C E O. Is that probably gonna be right turn out only?
Yeah.
Okay, and you'll have to sign it, and I assume that'll be part of your permit.
Yeah.
Couple of change of operations on this. Uh, again, we got a ship over there, no? Are we gonna say because, through the last nine?
No, I thought, I have to go back to my notes, I thought we had that either as a comment before.
I just see it, chose as a yes on the, uh.
Yeah, I totally had it know.
Okay, all right. All right, anything else, uh? Board has?
No.
Does the address, now the address, the revision date on that plan, four six? Um.
Yep.
All right. Or anything else? Anybody in the audience like to address the board regarding this application? Uh, let's move on. Okay, we've got, uh.
Just for the, I'm sorry, Mr. Sherman, I, I did provide you guys a new seeker resolution, only from the standpoint that there's been revisions made to the plan and things that we should consider, at least the stormwater and alternative roadways, so in lieu of just saying that we previously did seeker and all changes, I thought it'd be easier just to document redoing of the seeker.
I can, sure. All right, let's do, uh, separate actions for both the seeker and the site. I, I have a part, one from the applicant, we have a part two, please. From M R B, and I think we're going to seek a motion for seeker.
I will make the motion for the seeker resolution, unlisted action for C P N twenty-two dash zero two nine.
Okay, for discussion, second, excuse me. Second by Scott, for discussion, not on favor.
Hi.
All right. All right, uh, let's move on to the session. Someone, uh, wanna make a motion, and, uh, when they make a motion, we'll go over the conditions.
I will make the motion that we approve with the following conditions. How many we have?
I have the, the ten that are shown, uh, number eleven, that was added, was um, the plans in the application to be, uh, revised and re-submitted to the town development office, I'll get the names. Removing the, the rent, the statement of renting, um, of equipment from the plans, in the application. I can retweak it, but the, the point of it is, is that renting is not currently being proposed, and so we want the application, the plans to be updated to remove that. And then twelve was landscaping plans to be updated to depict the location of the existing silo and updated to match the previously approved landscaping plan along the silo in the front of the building.
Buildings.
Buildings, thank you.
Okay, uh, number nine, you have good display.
I don't know why, I, I saw it too, I think it's just the squint.
Oh, oh.
I don't, I think display show.
It's texted up at like eleven o'clock at night.
It can be some of my scribbles that we take here, so let's just say, um, put, put in this one.
Yeah.
Okay, with those additions and fractions, uh, one second.
I'll second. I've got it.
Okay, motion by Scott, second by Bob, for the discussion, it's on favor.
Yeah. Since I came in late, I will use myself on both.
Oh.
Oh, somehow we'll get along. We'll see. Okay, of the eligible board members, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay. You're all done, John. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
I just wonder.
Really?
All right, we're, uh.
Yeah.
Forget it, we're too.
Did you get a secret to it?
We're moving on to, uh, request, request for extensions. Uh, we have request from Mr. Westbrook to extend his subdivision approval, uh, out on, on Linda. There's a period of ninety days. And anything you agree? Are you making that one here?
So, I just wanna start saying thank you for good reason at different times. But, um, so this was an issue I was not yet, I did not present myself at the meeting in August, I was out of town. So, I read it, and I, I should be very clear. During, after the meeting, I got a message from my engineer. It said, and so, uh, and then spent the next couple of days trying to figure out what was gonna come out of it, is then you issued your findings and your, all the, all the stuff that you guys do. And, uh, the fundamental issue for me is that it's, uh, it's not enforced until another party. And, uh, the, the homeowners association, and I'm not saying that was the purpose of it, but it smelled an awful lot like that. And I just, I just was, uh, kind of surprised that the, uh, town wanted to have a or encouraged a homeowners association when the community does not ask for it, and therefore, there would be requirement that legislation has to be opted for that to occur.
So I, I think there's two issues here, it is the request for the extension.
Right, right.
That's not running out, and, and your reason for that is you're still working on needing the condition.
If you were me, and if you did thousands of dollars invested in something, you wouldn't go good after bad.
Okay, that was not, that was kind of unclear in your request, but okay, if that's the reason for your request for the extension, I think the board certainly considered that. Now, the other issue is, uh, the removal of condition nine, one of the conditions of approval, uh, regarding the, uh, well, the word is red, you've already conditioned. Uh, primarily had to do with the maintenance and use of on Linda. And, uh, I know it was discussed in detail at that meeting, like in August, uh, and we came to a conclusion that was reflected in the condition as it's written. And at the time, there was no objection from your engineer or anyone's, uh, regarding the condition. And we also heard, uh, for your bent on, here at the minutes, uh, Mrs. Foster was at the meeting, and she gave us, uh, the history of what she has had to go through personally to try to get residents and people who use on Linda, uh, to contribute to the maintenance in terms of snow removal and and, uh, I guess pot, fill the bottles and, and those things. And she's, she just says, I'm getting tired, I can't do it anymore, it's beating on doors, I'm becoming the the black sheep of the neighborhood, because I'm, I'm the bad girl in the neighborhood, and we said, well, I agree, and I think the board agreed, that there should be some sort of way of getting all the neighbors together and come up with some sort of agreement and have that formalized as to how and when the street will maintain, and and we continued to just keep adding more lots and we're, we're building lots and all that. I, I will say that one of her, her concerns was, let's call the subdivision that you have a branch off of on Linda.
They call on the drive extension.
Okay.
Okay.
And the first concern was, is that gonna become part of my responsibility to take care of, and I said, well, I think we can assure you that that branch, uh, will have some sort of mechanism that the, were the three lots? Four lots, well, how many, how many residents does not use that branch? Is there access to?
Ashley, lot four is on the map. Myself and my wife, lot three is on the map, and of course, we're told five.
So there, there'd be at least, at least some sort of formal agreement among those five properties as to how that branch would be maintained, okay?
But that's not what the item nine said.
That is exactly what item nine says. I'm sorry, I said, that is exactly what item nine says. What I've been telling you, it's very reasonable, because on Linda is a disaster. Every year, this poor woman has to go beg people.
Be careful how you call it a disaster, there are people that have different opinions, and what was represented in the arguments.
Okay, well, it's not a great situation, I know, it's not a great situation. Fifty years from now, when people named Westbrook don't live on Linda.
They'll always live there.
Okay, but, uh, you know, who's gonna decide how to plow this road? Who's gonna decide how to, who pays to shovel? I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, but today, there are three different parties that own that property, of the five, of the five lots, right?
Yeah. And those three parties are?
Ashley, Westbrook, Petronski, and Stefan Petronski. I, I for forty-one years, Beth Westbrook, I sold Greg Westbrook.
Okay.
And Corey Westbrook and Amanda Westbrook.
Don't you think you'd be at those parties, I think you know them, to, to agree to some sort of agreement that they jointly maintain?
Here's our view.
That branch.
Uh, it was, it was Thanksgiving weekend. Friday, Thursday, I worked a guy on Thanksgiving to clean up my, uh, trench that runs, well, that runs from the first pond you approach on the lower side, before you get up to the second pond, which is directly opposite, we call it the barn road. You know, but it, I wrote up, we're gonna spend this money on excavation, this money on securing new rip ramp, this money of getting a Harley rake, you know what a Harley rake is?
Mm-hmm.
And then finally getting a ten-ton roller this way to surface of the property. That's a decision that we made. Collected.
Among the clan.
Among the clan, that we knew we have to from evaluation of the property, we would do nothing but try to add value to that property, but the way we maintain it, in the deal with the product there so far. I'm just not prepared to tell people that. I'm not gonna tell people that in a written note about the five people there. What happens if my, my my son-in-law, I'll use that as an example, I'll use it also to daughter-in-law, Amanda Westbrook or Stefan Petronski says he can't do it? That's our personal business. And if you wanna tell me that I can assign something that I haven't sold to somebody yet, I will listen to that conversation, and I'm not gonna force my family to live by my rules. And I'm just not gonna do it. Also, make a comment about, the comments made about the stones, or, I listened to it twice, the video. And, uh, I, we like Kathy, right? You should ask Kathy next time you talk to her, have the Westbrooks ever not paid? Absolutely not. We've always paid. Whatever's asked of us, on, on the drive. That includes Corey, and that includes Ashley. We've always paid. That's snow plowing, we actually volunteer to take all the snow plowing, was there a problem with any snow plowers at, at the time? There was heavy snow, it was just, uh, it was kind of like a it, I didn't, it didn't hit me well, didn't hit me well though. To be told by the government, the body, that you have to make sure that your son and daughter are, uh, living by the rules, and we always do, to force it.
So, the concern is, you know, I assume, you know, if one of your children said, Dad, I'm a little short, I can't chip in this year. You know, most fathers would probably say, okay, things that makes, actually, so it's not gonna be a problem. But, I just guess, I, yeah. But like you said, it's none of our business, none of this board's business, how your finances, your children. But the concern, and the only reason I do this, is insist on this, or recommend that the board insist on this type of thing, is that what happens if one of these properties gets foreclosed? No, I'm not suggesting that your properties are gonna get foreclosed on, right? But one hundred years from now, it's an issue. Um, and then you've got some stranger in lot number two and saying, oh, we told me I have to chip in, go, go jump off a brick. And then you've got three, three houses chipping into the road and two houses not chipping into the road, and that's what leads to problems in this town, and that's why this town insists that these, that there be shared use and maintenance agreements, and it doesn't have to be very specific. Chris, which is the way on Linda Drive is now, the original section. I thought it was a disaster, but apparently not. Well, I mean, it, it's to the point that you've got people, uh, you have to beg, borrow, and still get people to contribute to, not, not that you're believing, uh, or your family's believing, but there are apparently other residences who could have a lot of pushback in terms of having to maintain that road.
Fundamentally, it goes back to one party.
Mm-hmm.
On the existing, on the Linda Drive. That's where it revolves around.
So, so the.
And, and, and let me make my comments, we are not interested in homeowners association.
No, I don't think we're asking for. We're not, no, don't have a. The need for a shared use and maintenance agreement here has, has nothing to do with it being on, on the drive, you can go back uh, pretty much consistently, this board has, has insisted that there be shared use and maintenance agreements, and these have been in place when there's a shared driveway. So, and I, it's not you know, if it was a, a family compound all on one lot, that's a different story, you have one lot open. This is a bunch of different lots that without something recorded, who's to say who owes? You can deal with it however you want, up to and until the time when people in Westbrook don't own these lots, at which point whoever does own the lots has a document recorded that, that indicates the rules. Was the one.
So, so you're trying to prevent another on the drive? So if I heard you correctly.
Want to make it worse? Well, yeah, I mean, that's an example, it's true. But that's not the only place in this town that this, that this is an issue, nobody needs a homeowners association here.
Chris and I did talk about it in his office, it's about the September, October.
Pursuing the conditions diligently, I think, entitled the extension. Well, uh, so our attorney is telling me, we might consider change, or we clarify. It's not an E J A.
He's saying, he's recommending to you, the board, that there would be no change in item nine?
I, I'm, I'm putting that out there. I, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Can I read the condition number nine real quick?
Well, before we do that, I mean, I. I've given you the same advice on every single private driveway you've seen. Uh, you should have a shared use maintenance agreement, not. I thought it was, I mean, maybe I didn't explain it clearly. It's like a one speech thing that says, well, if we all get to use it and we'll all chip in. That's it. It's not binding you together beyond that. Already bound together by the road.
Yeah, but legally, I don't believe I admitted to find somebody. As a result of this application I put forward.
No, you'd have to go get your daughter to sign and get your son to sign. And then you could personally.
You'd be surprised.
Chris, do you have the order plate of the agreement? That maybe once burden reads it. It's maybe not as lethal as you. It might be, might be less imposing.
Another way to look at this, I'm really into this conversation. Thank you for giving us this time. Is.
You're lucky it's a smug night.
It's also a Christmas party too, so I don't make too rough. I'm trying to cut down. Another thought was that if I'm the controller of three fifths of the property. My lot called, right?
Today.
Today, right? And if I were to sell one of those three lots to an outside party. You wanted to assign that responsibility back to me. That's fine. Then I will get that body of buyer of those potential properties. They will have to make me. Whole when it comes to their responsibility for the driver. I'm not gonna do it with my kids.
Well, you just gave the reason justification for an agreement.
Right.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But your problem is you don't wanna make, have to have your kids sign.
They were pre-existing. They were invited up.
I think there's already one existence for ashes.
Well, we, we.
And yeah, I think just. Did not use. I think it's just, whatever's bonded in. So the lots, the potential lots that could sell would be lots.
Three, four.
Three and four. I don't disagree. Well. I think this board has the right to, has the legal authority to insist on a private drive. Having a shared, you know, imposing upon the applicant that burden, but I don't dispute, right? You could apply the condition to just like one, three and four, the subjects of this application.
God forbid something happens to you and your wife. Right? What happens when Ashley and Cory decide they're gonna sell your house?
Get moved down low.
And there isn't a.
Well, the problem could be, I'm gonna be buried on a driveway. So we'd really hard to sell the house because we haunted it.
But I mean, that. I mean, that's a possibility too.
The main way, you know, we already lost one of our kids to a portal organ. I can't forget that one else.
It seems like poor planning. In general, not to have. A shared use and maintenance agreement. Um, because if we're not gonna do it with these kids. You know. What if one of the lots itself or? Gets foreclosed upon or?
What happens then?
An act of God changes the subdivision at the county court's office. Then you're stuck plowing that road. And the new owner of Ashley's lot gets free plow.
Every X year, we purchase a city of Connecticut with a polytruck. So something I'd like to do.
So you don't care if you're gonna give. If it applies to lots. Three and four.
So just to make a statement, as somebody who lives on a shared access road with thirteen other homes. I can tell you that I wish we had a shared access.
Everyone else.
Just to, to some other. And I knew it when I bought it, so I own it with the responsibility, but the challenges that it remains to. And we're a neighborhood that gets long rate. Until we don't, we generally get long rate.
Your neighborhood gets a little fantastic compared to most twenty years ago.
And we do. I, I love my neighborhood. I wouldn't change it, but I would love to have a shared access. As a result, we can't pay improvements to it now.
Right. We don't want pregnant.
We have standards for the way private roads should be designed and we're not.
These are standards on our island drive extension exceeds our design.
We foot gutter. The only thing that I, I guess I would say. Is. It's got a cover lot, one, three and four, and it's gotta say. This, you know, the. The burdened lots, one, three and four. I guess lots two and five are not subject to this agreement. Gotta say that.
Is there an innocent question?
Well, so that the purchaser, potential purchaser of lot three knows that he's gonna foot the bill for lot two and five.
Protection.
Protection.
Let's not waste it on today.
Obviously, and maybe lot two and five get purchased by good and decent people who say, hey, we're using this road. I see you're plowing it. Let me chip in for gas. Then I understand you have to buy a new tool and belt for that big giant.
City plow.
City plow. Let me chip, let me chip that. Uh, so maybe it's not an issue. But I'm comfortable with the shared use of maintenance agreement covering one, three and four. And that states that the owners of whatever address two and five are. Uh, are not subject to and not required. That being said, this lot five had an easement. Over this road, assuming it does.
Yes, it do.
Well, we're sure it's recorded for that, we can count. But, cause if I were doing a lot three, I'd say. For you, I'm not. Let you use this road, that the whole gate. Cause that kind of thing happens. When there's no shared access.
Go back to.
But I think that if we're gonna change the condition, we have to confirm that this. Easement is in full effect for whatever lots, both two and five. Would you, cause lot four could borrow access for Ashley's lot. Lot one could borrow access to them.
Would you add a clause in there that if lot two and five were to be sold? Then that owner, the new owner would be now expected to chip in. I mean. How is it?
I don't know. You can't do a few, a future. Covenant on land.
So two or five are sold, then you'd have to come up with a new agreement.
No, two or five are always going to be able to get free. Maintenance.
Now, I also want to be really clear. Those three lots up there. With the other activity on four events of property on, on the drive, it's converted into two lots under discussion. Two of those down there. You know. I would tell you without hesitation that every request for payment has been honored. We understand the obligation. I just don't wanna be forced to, I rule. Some people think. Maybe a way to solve the problem that doesn't exist.
I think what. I, adopting what Chris is proposing, it protects you. From any future buyer who lives lots. Something in their nose at you as far as trying to, well, they'd be obligated to support the maintenance. Of the branch.
But there's no enforcement of the gentleman or family fuse put in line prior. With those last on the Linda drive, you know, so it, 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 it just. This, my view is it's unnecessary. I will. Certainly engage with my attorney to determine the lot three, our lot and lot four possibility, of course. And we see what he's got to say.
Can we live with that for now?
I think we should.
In the meantime. Thank you. Um, extension request.
So here's the logic behind it, okay? When I got the notice. Officially, Chris and I call it sometime September. We had a good conversation. I took it to my attorney. And uh, it was this discussion. And at that point, I decided I'm not gonna do anything. As an example. This, this easement. This drive. To be across that, right? So.
So you really haven't done anything.
Do we have done anything? It's a focal reasons. And we all know how quickly. All due respect. The engineering firm works, but they have other obligations to other clients. And it's just being practical. If we've lost, let's just say we have lost ninety days, need additional ninety days and I'll be, I'll be done.
Well, it's, it's the board standard practice for, if, if you're just good justification, uh, that we grant. You know, extensions and I don't think the board has a probable grave extension. That's not an issue. You think we could get everything wrapped up by May twenty-first of next year?
I think it's preparation.
You know, the condition be changed to cover only lots one, three and four. Is that for you?
Uh, that's not part of these.
That currently is.
That is not part of this. We're, we're not addressing the, well, the amendment or removal or continuation of condition. That's gonna be something. You made a proposal. I think the board endorses that proposal. If you wanna run it by your attorney, see. Alright, so let's uh. Let's take a motion for extending Mr. Westbrook's subdivision.
If I may, so the, the current extension, the current approval expires February twentieth, twenty twenty-three. If you were granted an extension in any day extension tonight. That would then require, I mean, that would then extend your approval to May twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Just wanted to make it clear, cause I know that's not, that's not technically what you, you and I asked for, and I just.
Yes, it's like they have to determine.
Right. Right.
The next week in June. I just wanna make sure that was at least stated.
Yeah, we get requests the night of the meeting. So you're, you're ahead of the game. Thank you for that. Uh, okay, so we have a motion and a second. Let's get it, do it.
I'll, I'll move.
Okay, Scott Lou, what seconded? A motion to extend the, the approval for ninety days to May twenty-first of next year on paper. I, I. Okay, so.
Thank you. Good for now. Merry Christmas.
Same to you. Thanks for keeping us company.
Are you making anything up here or next to no, or is that all stored?
We all, we all brought. I made. Amanda, what did you think?
Yeah, let's move that on your basic. Help yourself.
Mark made the start.
I don't know. This is our first Christmas.
Okay.
We have the first Christmas. Forgot about it. This is our second Christmas together, everybody.
Some of us.
I was here, but under different circumstances.
Oh, yeah.
So just thinking through that. A division of responsibility. Another that would be to put that on to his lot. Make his lot responsible for three fifths of it.
Like the mask.
All the maintenance.
Well, he can collect.
But I mean, whatever that ratio is, he doesn't want it to pass to his kids. So he carries it and then that ties to his lot. That doesn't impact the value of there. The real issue is control. It's normally not the money. My roadways needed to be done for years. It's failing more and more every year. We patch it over a year, eventually fail. So it's the ability to make a decision. Whenever they still need you. So who makes the decision on what it costs and who's gonna do the work? We, you do it when you get along. As soon as you don't get along. But it creates a problem.
How enforceable are those agreements? We, we had a private cattle drove thirteen cattle. This is four people that's never paid. Not gonna help, not gonna, so we just. Added ours actually, but, but how enforceable is?
We can't, that we would say that.
It's not a town code.
No, we would say that in a term.
That's gonna be even, I mean, if it is only his lot. He controls all the access to the other lots.
I don't like that.
He's either one of. I'm pretty sure that he's gonna wanna tweak it so that he's got control, but it's not gonna say when he's responsible. You know, like somebody, his daughter, his son sell the house.
Sure.
Somebody new moves in, first major storm comes through, they can't get out. Hey, great, you're supposed to maintain this. I know, look at line twenty-three of page five. It says that I can do it whenever I wanna do it. I don't want to do it.
That's why they have H O Hs, right? It's also why we're starting a, uh. Policy to get anything beyond two and three.
Three lots is, is a public road.
So we can, we can revert the plan to that. Okay, no problem. We can remove that clause assuming it becomes a public road.
But anytime there's even two of them.
You've said that before.
I've said that.
You said that with Sunset Ridge.
I mean, we tried to get them on the fire code. That didn't apply because.
You know, I'm a little lots have access to Wesley, physically. Yeah. He skirted around as much as he could. It's just.
And you're just not like trying to. But yeah, and how much responsibility a municipality has, make sure that happens.
Like Mark said, he bought, he knew full well that he's gonna live on a road that he'd be sharing the maintenance with other neighbors, but wherever you were. You did ask.
Well, maybe you don't have grants, take business, but.
Generally, it's not an issue because you gotta pay for snow plowing. You know, eventually everyone's gonna chip in. And maybe one, maybe there's one jerk who refuses and everyone else just gets a little bit screwed. But Mark, your street and this street are even worse because half the people don't, shouldn't be paying for snow plowing. Cause they don't live there in the right there.
So you're saying based on you.
No, I'm saying theoretically, they, they've done a little bit of everything related to that, right?
So plowing is cheap, so that's not, it's mostly determined by maintenance. Repaid. So they used to look at the ratio of how much the roadway you used. So if you were further in, you got. Well, you could look, they did it both ways. You either got home for more or less. So the guy on the end.
Prorate the assessment.
Right? Then they, then they basically bro, correlated it to how much frontage you had on it. So that was done too. So we had that example. And now we all get along so well that we just divide it, but we can't.
You divide it evenly?
We do.
Wow.
And we can't, it's not big numbers.
No, yeah.
It's a hundred and fifty bucks a year per house. Nobody cares.
But when it gets to be, when you need to tear that road out.
So when we proposed a thirty-eight thousand dollar roadway replacement. That all, still is only three thousand dollars a household.
That first house probably had a lot to say.
No, they basically said, no, we're not gonna do it. We're fine with the fact that it wants to use to keep in.
I can still get to my house. That's well, but you know, that's not great neighboring, but it's a legitimate position. When you don't have any agreement. That's right. Uh, one of the reasons, I mean. I've actually litigated cases where one. User got foreclosed upon. It was all one property. With this road circling it, they subdivided it.
They subdivided it, financed it separately, county foreclosed on this side, and the bank foreclosed on this side. And two people bought it at separate auctions.
Oh my.
And then the guy in the front said, you can't use my road. Um, it's my property, I'm putting a gate on it, well, but then I can't access my property. Um. And it's more complicated because they had access to the state road, but there wasn't sight distance, so they couldn't actually use it. It was a disaster. And. Well, you don't, you know. If, you know, something horrible happens, I'm sure the Westbrooks. You know, will buy a lot of that, whatever, I'm sure that those two lots are gonna be a problem.
The Westbrooks aren't gonna live forever.
Right?
No, did you not hear him?
So, I mean, he's act, he's operating like he's gonna.
Well, that's what.
Patriarch up there for eternity.
Terribly concerned at some point.
But that's um, that's his. That's his ego, that's not.
They'll put that in place, I'm sure they'll put that in place.
Sort of.
Well, the good news is, yes, uh, the new subdivision regulations with. Fire public streets for.
Fact science are coming.
Three.
Three or one. Three or four.
Three or one.
Or three or four.
No, more than.
So you're saying if he allowed it to expire.
More than three.
Four.
Three or last is.
Right.
But it doesn't.
Which is not to give him another ninety day extension.
It doesn't cure the sins of the past.
Trying to figure out this argument.
Does Chris call calls from residents saying, you know, my neighbor won't uh.
This sounds like a main problem.
I mean. The Christians, uh. My neighbor won't contribute to plowing and the town has an obligation.
No, we steep dry was a problem recently, that's what it's called.
But fire codes is gonna be updated to require.
But.
It's in these private times.
We just say it's simple.
I mean, county board members do.
And I was told that uh.
Well, it creates.
HOAs are enforceable by the county, that it has to go to the county level.
No. They're only enforceable against each other. Such actual HOAs.
Yeah. So there is like, so I, when I lived in Popplestown, I was told that somehow, if you wanted to, said nobody was enforcing any of it.
If it was county court, you'd have to sue in county court, is that what it is?
Okay, well, we'll trust our solicitor to. Put Mr. Westbrook on that one. Come back.
Nice.
With a suggestion.
Suits you nice.
Okay, minutes of November twenty second.
So much. Okay.
Guys have been really just civilized to each other.
Scott, Scott, the motion maker, Amanda seconded. Okay, all favor?
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Hi. Scott made it, Amanda seconded. On favor?
Aye.
Thank you, John. Set of good minutes. Okay, we got sure release for Piercebrook. Anybody carrying that kind of change around?
Bob.
Bob? Did everybody get to look at, if you want to see what the details of the release would be, it's here. Mark, do you wanna see it?
Sure.
Okay, see it now? If if you want to, we can defer action until. Until you've had a chance to peruse it.
Sixty seconds.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we hold that action in advance, so Mark gets to look at the uh. Release request.
I think that's, is that where you pass down?
Yeah, I just.
Yep, okay.
Okay, uh. Backus. No more.
Backus is.
They're gonna build it at the elevation.
Yep.
Okay, we almost had a plan revision, but it went away, talk about.
Yeah, they didn't wanna come back in, so.
Scott needed. Send that back. The Metro Street name, do we have to do anything formally with Maze Landing? Not on the general, but so.
We have to just discuss, there doesn't need to be a resolution. If we're okay with taking the apostrophe out of Maze. Because we can't do that. This is my choice.
What to do it tonight or just?
How have we done this in the past? Just talk about it.
Nine oh one, typically road names, I don't know, but I don't ever remember the board, I usually end up.
It happened like twice.
They go to.
We noted on it and had one of the other ones.
Yeah, you did.
Anybody opposed to it?
There's no.
You know. Then you can convey that information to them.
Yep, I will, we will let. One ones.
It's no longer possessive.
Correct.
Who owns it? We don't know.
That's a public street.
Certainly not the maze.
What's the old and the new?
Maze. Apostrophe. New is no apostrophe.
John, the only one is maze.
Maze Road.
The only one is maze.
Maze Landing.
Maze, is it?
M A E apostrophe S is the old, sorry. And the new is.
At the request, John, at the request of nine oh one, they asked. Be removed, I guess, it's part of their.
We don't allow them, I guess it's.
I bet it's still on the sign. Uh, there's no sign yet. Kind of same when it goes up, that's the only place it matters, right? And then yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is.
Nine one ones driving.
Where is it?
Okay, so the.
Is it a road or a drive or? We don't know.
Landing, it's a landing.
Maze Landing.
Oh, Maze Landing is a landing.
Just remove the apostrophe, anything else?
This is the Metros?
Yes.
The missing name of the road, and their new road.
Their new road.
Right.
They just can't keep the apostrophe.
I bet you get charged for a full character on the sign for dispossessing.
That's why Wegmans doesn't have the apostrophe.
Oh, yeah, cuz.
Because he wouldn't need to wonder what pay for that extra.
It sounds about right.
It's Wegmans with no apostrophe.
Think, which sounded absurd when he decided to do that thirty years ago or however, think about how much money he saved.
Okay, going back to Piercebrook, uh. You okay, Mark? I I would be. So I have motion in a second. For a discussion of Westbrook to. No, Westbrook. Piercebrook. Piercebrook subdivision, phase one, letter, credit raise number two.
Partial.
CPM number twenty one dash two zero nine. Six hundred and twenty four thousand eight hundred one dollars and eighty three cents. Make the motion that we lose, authorize that this. Hey, I think we already have a motion in a second. Uh, you you can third it.
Wait, who seconded?
I'll second.
I first did.
Oh, now we do.
Now we do.
Perfect.
Who was the sign?
I only read it.
I was.
There's Mark.
I like to know, Chris.
Okay.
You got him ready to get done, you got.
But I just like to know it, it's easier than I.
All favor?
Aye.
Going downhill, we end the year. So we can clean up here, Airport Road, you know, that's. No longer in our bailiwick for a while, right?
I'm sorry, I'm just.
Airport Road.
Airport, where, I mean, uh, you know.
Not yet, not for, hopefully never, but not yet.
And uh. Did we also have any other business? Hang on a minute. John, uh, I guess officially, this is your last meeting, but unofficially, I think you're gonna. Hang one for a while, maybe a little bit, just to help us out.
Well, we don't have a replacement for John yet.
Yeah, so we can't leave.
Obviously.
Great, my candidate.
No replacement, great, no leave.
Right.
Looking for.
Are you going away this way? No, well, then you can stay.
So you can all take turns.
How long do you think we can get John into doing that?
Spring.
He certainly.
Twenty, twenty, twenty four.
He said if we. He deserves your retirement, I'm seriously considering.
The good news is, this is not goodbye, so.
Has there been interest?
Do you wanna do it?
Not this and this. I'm cold.
Do you wanna come to PRC? We're gonna get familiar with the house. What day and time? Nine AM on the second.
They are the easiest to work. We'll see, the easy, it's easier.
Oh, it was are the ones that interest.
No, it's not.
It's for thirty six pages.
Yeah, but that's all, it's all information, you don't have to say he said, she said, he said.
Yeah.
Tom's gonna go to dump it.
No, no, you'll love it.
They love it.
The solomons.
It's very plug and plug.
God, whoever is gonna be take over.
Some of this is referred to as.
Okay, I guess we can announce everybody.
He deserves a retirement.
Everybody Metro training, right? Obligations.
Everybody is fully trained.
With the Scott's certificate he brought tonight.
Yes.
You guys, really?
Yeah, I'm there.
They all do.
I'm so proud of you.
Especially the twelve pointers, those twelve hours.
The twelve pointer.
I got two and a half for next year.
I think Mark has like sixteen and a half or.
But that does not usually happen.
Good for next year, yeah.
Not a lot of teeth pulling.
Kim has thirty two or eighty eight.
Well, brown house, this is brown. How many extra do you have ahead?
What?
How many extra?
It's thirty two hours.
You can only carry one of a certain number, I think.
No.
Twenty eight extra. No.
Can I, I see the New York Planning Federation's come back to Saratoga Springs.
Yes, they are, April nineteenth or fourteen.
I think one of, once, one of our board members certainly, I think you usually allocate one.
We allocate, I think, at least for two.
You're going.
I know Saratoga, so I'll go. I'm on.
Are we that?
You're going, you'll take that one for the team.
You don't even know when it is.
You're good with it? You don't care?
I need to.
I'm calling.
Try to rotate it, but he needs that one, so.
Second one.
No.
Next, I'm going in. June or something.
That was already.
Uh, your first meeting in January.
Who are you?
We've got uh. Brunner, uh, the sausage made, artesian meats. And uh, we have. A reorganization meeting. We have.
We have uh.
How does that benefit?
It's just an organization.
We also have multiple uh. Sureties that Chris has something going through, we have like seventeen, so we're gonna have to figure out.
Seventeen.
Yes.
We've been cleaning them up.
You can just approve them as a lot.
Can we go make one?
Such quick ones.
Yeah.
Mark's gonna be busy, we have seventeen sureties.
We have eight, days coming up, that days industrial.
Yeah, January my date, that's.
Jump coal.
Yeah, jump coal, whatever that was. You have um, went back from today that you continued. Artesian meats, you just mentioned, and then that solar.
Next one, I'll sketch it in.
You're gonna put the sketch there?
That's right.
Just do a little resolution saying we hereby approve the release of these sureties.
That's what you want me to do, not do individual resolution for.
Do you need?
And we are gonna have our reorganization meeting, make sure you read through our rules and regulations. If you have suggestions, corrections, additions. Either get them to us prior to that meeting or. Hold it out that night. And make sure you're all good with the calendar that was circulated last week. Okay? All right, you don't have anything, anybody else have anything?
Please, I take some cookies and cheese.
Yeah. So we'll make a motion for the last time this year.
Yeah, let's do it. All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn this evening at seven twenty four. Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas, I'll second.
Holidays.
All favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
Bye Bob, feel better. Happy holidays.
That is viable.